Where Ms. Reed begins the next budget work session. I wanted to let you know that our colleague, Ms. Smith, is not here. She had a family emergency. Her dad had a fall and so she went to visit him in New Jersey. So she's going to report back to us later today, but that's where she is today. And Ms., so she just wanted to let you know she tried to be here but couldn't.
Okay, so we are now calling to order the budget work session. And the scope of today's meeting is to discuss the FY 2016 fiscal forecast. And Kristin Michael has prepared a presentation for us. And I will ask if folks have a clarifying question as she's going through each page, to ask a very brief question there and then we'll save time at the end for any other more broad-based discussion. But the purpose today is to really just provide information, so I'm expecting this to be fairly straightforward. Kristin?
Thank you so much for having me today to present the fiscal forecast. I'm going to walk through the PowerPoint presentation. In addition to that, there's a summary spreadsheet posted, but the PowerPoint's really going to walk us through that summary spreadsheet. Today, I'm presenting the fiscal forecast for our school operating fund, but I do want to remind board members, in our FY 15 approved budget document, there are fiscal forecasts for five years for all of our governmental funds. So while today, we're focusing just on the operating fund, that information is available for you.
Ms. Michael?
Yes?
Is this your first presentation as the Assistant Superintendent?
It is. Woo! Thank you. So briefly before I start, I really just want to mention, as we look forward, you're going to see some really similar trends to what we've seen in the past. So growing student enrollment really continues to be a significant cost driver for FCPS. Compensation increases continue to be a high priority. And when you look overall, our revenue is projected to increase by less than 1% in this forecast for FY 16, even after we assume a 3% increase in the county transfer. But before we go into FY 16, I wanted to take just a second and make sure we looked back. So when we look back, balancing the budget to meet the needs of our rapidly growing and changing student body over the last several years, has really caused us to make some really difficult choices. So if we look at our budgeted enrollment, for FY 15, it's nearly 22,000 students more than our budget in 2008. The cumulative cost for that enrollment growth is $190 million. So over that timeframe from 2008, we've actually increased by nearly as many students as Arlington County has in their entire school system. So when we look at the budget, the budget typically includes a five-year comparison of data. So when you look at our student enrollment over that same period of time, our fastest-growing group of students are students who receive English for speakers of other languages services. And over the last five years, that's increased by 34%. And then when we look at the students eligible for free and reduced-price meals, over that five-year period, that's an increase of 25%. So while we look at that significant enrollment, that $190 million in enrollment costs, at the same time, FCPS has taken nearly $435 million in budget reductions over that same time period. So when you look at the approaches that we've taken for budget reductions, we've really used some thoughtful approaches. We've done program reviews. We looked at what programs we could eliminate, redesign, redeploy, or keep as they were. We also looked at all of our different position categories. And in addition to making reductions based on program needs, we also reduced contract lengths. So if you think back, over 3,000 employees saw their contract lengths reduced during that period as well. When we think of employee compensation in FY 10 and FY 11, our employees didn't receive any salary increases. And we've only, we have not provided a step increase since FY 2008 in FY 10, 11, 13, and 14. So the other important thing to consider is as we look at how we balanced all those previous budgets, FCPS did receive significant assistance from the federal government through the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act era. If you remember, we received approximately $100 million over two years. We received funding for Title I IDEA and then general education through what was called state fiscal stabilization funds.
May I make one comment on that previous slide? If you go back? I think this is a very important slide for all of us to be able to talk about with supervisors, our community. We're working on a communication strategy. This will be a major point. But class size has increased three times over the last three years. And this is very concerning to us and I think something that we hope to, and Kristin will get to in just a little bit again, about we really need to start to look at our class sizes going down. But we've been forced to use class size to balance the budget, and that's very unfortunate. But I think this slide is very important as we move forward in our communication. Some people think that the 2,175 positions, that is real 2,135 people that would be in our system right now, doing work alongside everyone else, if we had not been in cost-cutting mode for these last five years. So those are real positions cut, and that's what a lot of people don't under-understand that piece.
Ms. Strauss?
Just to highlight what Dr. Garza just said, when I go out with the equivalent of this slide, often people will say, "Well, does that mean you basically kicked that number of people out of the system?" And I will come back in and say, these were, you know, we have a growing school system. Some people were on the streets, some of them weren't. But what most people don't understand, as Dr. Garza said, these were real positions serving a need in a classroom or a school predominantly. And so that we, you get, some people will say, "Well, it's okay because you didn't hurt that many people." But the emphasis is on the quality of instruction in schools and the quality of the workload that has not changed, it's grown. So it's not, did we, you know, did we put somebody in a breadline? It's the lack of service to children that has suffered, and that's the emphasis. And I find very few people understand that part of it.
And we've had had situations where we have had real positions, people losing their jobs. And so it's been a mixture. So we've been fortunate in that we were growing as well. So it doesn't, it doesn't mean we laid off that many people, but there were quite a number that have, that, you know, we've had to displace, we've had an actual reduction force. Right? But we have, as your point, your point is, we have a very, we have fewer people doing a lot more work. They do a lot, have to spread the work out to fewer people.
So when we look at FY 16, first, I'm going to talk about revenue, then I'll discuss required expenditures, then recommended expenditures, and then lastly, I'm going to get to all of those unfunded needs, which include class size. So when we first look at revenue, the first line item that we need to look at is beginning balance. We're projecting that we'll have $27.8 million for beginning balance for FY 16. This is comprised of $22.8 million that we set aside at the FY 14 final budget review. And at this point, we're also projecting that we'll add an additional $5 million at mid-year budget review, making that total $27.8 million. If you remember, we started FY 15 with a budget of beginning balance of $48.5 million. So that is a loss or a reduction of $20.7 million. So that leaves a shortfall right there. If there is a good side to this, we are reducing our reliance on one-time funding, using that one-time funding to balance our budget, but it does leave a shortfall of $20.7 million as we project FY 16. When we look at the county transfer, at this point in the slide, we've left the county transfer level. So when we get to the bottom, after we've reviewed revenue and expenditures, we can show you what the total funding needed is. But the county transfer guidance was for 3%, which we'll discuss as we get further along in the presentation. When we look at state aid on this presentation, we separated state aid into three different lines on the chart. So the first line is recognizing the impact of the state's final budget adoption for FY 15, which occurred after FCPS adopted our budget for FY 15. So when that happened, state aid, their final budget, will provide us with $4.5 million less than we had projected for FY 15. So since we're looking at this forecast and we're comparing 16 to our 15-approved budget, we need to recognize that loss of revenue, so that's $4.5 million. The second line, we've separated out the impact of enrollment increases based on feedback that we've received from constituents in the Board of Supervisors. So as FCPS's enrollment increases, we do receive additional state aid based on their state per pupil. Obviously, the amount of funding we get from the state is substantially below how much we spend per pupil, but our projection for the impact of enrollment increase is $3.6 million. Then the last line in terms of the state budget is we've included a reduction placeholder of $19.4 million. The state has provided guidance to their state agencies to identify reductions in their budgets of 7%. So looking at the state's budget shortfall that they're projecting for this year and next, we're very hopeful that the state won't reduce budgets for K-12 schools this school year, because most school systems have already developed their budgets. They're primarily employees and teachers that are already in place. So school districts will have a very tough time adjusting their budget this year. So looking at that, we're assuming that school districts will not be spared the impact of the state budget for next year. So we've included a reduction projection of 5%, and that's looking at our total state aid, not sales tax. So that's 19.3. So when you add all of those together, we're showing a decrease in state aid of $20.3 million. Then the next line on the chart is sales tax. We're projecting an increase in sales tax for next year of $5 million. When we look at that increase, state aid has been fluctuating a lot when you look at statewide. Now remember, FCPS receives sales tax based on a different payment methodology than the county does. So the county receives their sales tax based on point-of-sale, so what's sold in Fairfax County, versus FCPS receives her sales tax based on statewide sales, and it's distributed based on our portion of students, which is calculated by the Weldon Cooper Center at the University of Virginia. So we are projecting an increase in sales tax for next year and also a slight increase for this year. So when you look at, we received $169.7 million in sales tax in FY 14, and our 15-budget is a 2.4% increase. So when we look at moving forward, we are, again, projecting a 3% increase in sales tax for next year, but we'll have to carefully monitor that as this fiscal year goes on, because we've really only received one month's worth of sales tax payments for this current year. So our last revenue category is our federal aid. Federal aid for FCPS and the operating fund is primarily IDEA, and we're projecting that that federal aid will remain level going into the next year. Of that total federal funding, $34 million is for IDEA, and our other two largest pieces of federal revenue are impact aid and E-rate funding. In terms of Fairfax City and other revenue, we're projecting that our revenue from Fairfax City will increase by 2%, so that's an increase of $1.2 million. Then the last item in this revenue section, we have a subtotal of our funds available, which is $34.8 million. And then our last category is our textbook reserve beginning balance. So each year, we reduce the allocation of textbook funding provided to schools, and we hold that in a reserve. So when our social studies textbooks and our math textbooks, when those licenses expire, we'll be, have enough funding available to replace those textbooks. So each year, we withhold a portion of per-pupil funding. So this is the beginning balance portion of that textbook reserve. So overall revenue was projected to be a shortfall of $32.2 million.
Okay, I think we had a couple of questions. Mr. McElveen, was your question on this particular slide?
It's actually just a very quick comment. I just want everyone to keep that state figure in mind, because that's going to affect how we do our legislative advocacy this year when it comes to keeping the pie as it is instead of actually growing the pie for us. So unfortunate as it is, that's what it looks like.
Good point. Ms. Schultz, did you have a comment or question on this particular slide?
I did. Just, I just have a question about the 4.5 on the state revenue. That was what we projected, was the 4.5.9, or they projected to us, or I mean...
So what happened is, when we were developing our budget, because the state budget wasn't adopted, we had projections that had come out based on the conference committee report, and these were those projections. When the state finally adopted their budget, we had a revenue shortfall, and it was also offset by an expenditure decrease, which I'll talk about in the expenditure section. So on our year-end agenda, we recognized both the decrease in revenue and the decrease in expenditures. But it was because the state budget was approved afterwards, and they made changes based on the projections that were in the conference committee report.
So I'm just, I want to be cautious with how we portray this, because it's not as much of a loss of revenue, it was a correction in the projection of how much we would get.
Correct. And it was primarily due to the state eliminating the cost of competing support for support positions in Northern Virginia. So you're correct. It's not that we lost funding, but the final state actions reduced the funding as projected to what the conference committee had recommended.
We're not going to have as much as we projected. I mean, I don't know what, in terms of communication, how we can best articulate that. I just want to be cautious, because I don't want us to get into a, "Well, you're portraying a loss of revenue as a cut." It's, you know, and it's a nuanced thing, but, you know, when people pick up messaging and run with it, I want us to be careful that we're guiding the conversation. If we're not funding the level of education. Now, the cost of competing, did that affect only Northern Virginia, or did that affect other?
Northern Virginia only.
Oh gee, thanks.
So I think you're right about the messaging part on how we talk about this reduction in state revenue. I think we may be better suited to actually talk about state policies and what's happening with K-12 education funding statewide, because each jurisdiction's variance from what they had prior years are all going to be based on projections. And then I think this year's a little unusual, because we didn't have the final state numbers, because those budgets were not passed before we could pass the budget.
And I think, too, being able to articulate well the issue, the very, very specific issue, instead of, you know, Chicken Little and the Sky's Falling, say, "Listen, you state legislature made a decision to cut our cost-compete calculation, and this is how you, you know, upend a budget in one fell swoop." So I just want to be careful about that.
Good point.
Ms. Reed?
Mr. Stork?
I would clearly echo that point, and the reality is, if there's a way to harm Northern Virginia, we can assume that that will at least be part of the conversation in the legislature, and hopefully the governor will see it differently. But I think we all ought to be very seriously concerned about what's likely to happen in terms of the games that'll be played that are not favorable to us. The formula, I think, Ms. Quinn, you and I had talked about this once before, I just wanted to make it clear to me, too, is the formula for the sales tax, I understand it's based upon overall statewide collections, number of students. How does that roughly equate to the county? I mean, what would, in other words, if the formula were different and based on county sales tax collections, and we got our share of that, how much difference is there between the two?
Typically, our sales tax and the county's sales tax receipts have trended similarly. So in general, the trends have been similar. But when you look at the end of last fiscal year and our most recent collections, the county is seeing more of a loss than we are, right? Which says we're seeing a greater impact in terms of sales tax to Northern Virginia than the state as a whole.
And we get what percent of the sales tax? One? 1%? Is that...
We receive, it's slightly more than a cent. The sales tax collection, some come straight to the locality and some goes to the state to fund education as well. So it's just over a cent.
But if you took the two formulas, if you took the county's sales tax, you multiply it times the formula that's supposedly allocated to schools, and then you compare that to the actual, action revenue that we get from the state, which is based on the overall sales tax collected around the state divided by the number of students, I think is what you said, how do those two numbers...
And we could get you that detailed information. I believe we actually had a higher absolute dollar amounts, higher than the county in collection of sales tax this past fiscal year.
So some years it's up, some years it's down? Is that kind of how it works?
Because, again, I think it's, the county gets point-of-sale, I believe, 1% sales tax. School systems, it's one and a quarter, but only one and one-eighth comes back to the localities, and the other one-eighth is used as part of the state's basic aid funding. So when you calculate that one and one-quarter, obviously, that tends to be more than the 1% coming back to the county. And then we also benefited a little bit by going to the Weldon Cooper Center calculation rather than the triennial census. Remember, we used to get sales tax based on the census data?
Yeah.
When we, when that changed, we actually benefited slightly. Our population, student population percentage was higher than what we were getting through the triennial census.
Well, I'm sure somebody will figure out how to change that, not to our favor. Thank you.
I also really appreciate these questions. We put information on both the state's policy shifts in terms of how things are funded and a historical look at how our sales tax and state aid revenue has increased for the Joint Budget Development Committee on Wednesday. So you'll see both of those items in that presentation.
Okay, I have Mr. Velkoff, and just to remind colleagues, there are 12 pages, and we're on number four.
I'll try to make this really fast. Do we know the pathway that the money takes from the cash register to Richmond? Does it make a stop in the coffers in Fairfax County, or does it go from the cash register down to Richmond?
Yeah. Okay, Ms. Michael, continue.
All right, so we're on slide five, looking at required expenditures. The first item on the slide is enrollment increases and student demographic changes. The forecast includes $21.3 million for both membership growth and those demographic shifts, with the assumption of an increase of about 2,300 students. So when we look at where, how we calculate enrollment growth at this point, right, when we do the fiscal forecast, we use an incremental cost per pupil to calculate this projection. When we get to the proposed stage of the budget, we'll get enrollment projections from facilities for every school and each individual program, and then we'll calculate enrollment all over. So basically, we start at zero and calculate each school's allocation of staff. Then we'll compare that allocation to the staffing that was approved for this year's budget, and that change is how we calculate the cost of growth. So we'll do that on a school-by-school, student-by-student service when we get to the proposed stage. So the next item on this chart is base savings. Base savings represents the recurring savings from turnover that occurs. So for FY 16, we're projecting $27 million in base savings. So this base savings is a permanent reduction of our budget, and it's in addition to the budgeted lapse rate that we've maintained for next fiscal year. The next compensation item is the impact of delayed step. Step was provided this year, delayed by two months for most of our employees. Teachers were on a 10-month contract. And then for all of the employees on the U.S. scale, step was delayed by four months. So the fiscal impact of that is that step wasn't fully funded in this current year's budget. So that means in the FY 16 budget, we'll have to fund that $10.4 million in unfunded step costs from FY 15. The next item is health insurance increase. We've been working really hard to try to keep our health insurance costs increase very minimal for next year, so I'm very pleased to say that you'll see a projection of only $1.2 million. This is very significant when you look at what the change is from our current year. So that's some great news when we look at this slide. The next item is retirement and retiree healthcare increases. So when we look at retirement, VRS, the Virginia Retirement System, sets the retirement rate for two years in a row. So for FY 16, it's the second year of the biennium, so we're not projecting any increase in that VRS rate for the employer or the employees. What we do have in this small cost increase of $1.6 million is a projected increase in the cost for F-CERS, which is Fairfax County's retirement system. And we have employees who participate in that system. It's primarily bus drivers, custodians, trade workers, and food service workers, as well as part-time teachers. So that's a slight increase. We're projecting that rate will go from 20.18 to 21.1 for next fiscal year. Then included in this is when the state adopted the budget for this current year, they reduced the rate for the retiree healthcare credit. So that savings shows up on the next line, which is state benefit rate changes. So when you look at the retiree healthcare credit, they reduced that rate from 1.18 to 1.06. At the same time, the state reduced the group life rate from 1.32 to 1.19. So when we combine those two items together, that's going to save us $2.8 million in expenditures. So this is just like that revenue piece. It's the impact of the state budget, and the projections that we had from the state were for those higher rates. So when the final budget was approved and the rates were lower, we had an expenditure savings of $2.8 million. The next line in the expenditures is OPEB, or Other Post-Employment Benefits. We're projecting at this point that we'll be able to decrease our contribution to OPEB by $3.5 million for FY 16. We still believe that this lower amount is going to satisfy our requirement for our annually-required contribution, but it is something that we'll have to watch as those actuarial rates get calculated each year moving forward. The next line for full-day Mondays, $6.3 million. What that is, is that's the projection that we included for this year of $7.6 million in teacher positions, offset by projected savings of $1.3 million in contract-length reductions. When we look at that projection or that placeholder of $7.6 million, when we get to the mid-year budget review this year, we will adjust that number based on the actual number of positions that were needed. But for the purposes of doing the fiscal forecast, since this data had to be completed before we could calculate that cost, we started with that full placeholder of $7.6 million. When we look at contract-length reductions, we believe we'll be able to reduce contract lengths based on three fewer student days for employees, including bus drivers and floaters, as well as bus driver supervisors and attendants, some educational interpreters, Braille transcribers, public health attendants, safety and security assistants, and food service workers. That will offset that cost of full-day Mondays. Then the last item on the slide is the division reorganization savings. As part of the division-wide reorganization, also at the final FY 14 budget review, we recognized savings of 0.6 million due to those reorganizations, and that is an ongoing savings for FCPS. So the next slide, Slide 6, continues the required expenditure adjustments with logistics. So the first is contractual increases. We have projected contractual increases of $2 million headed into next year. That includes rates for contracts, which include maintenance and technology, as well as building leases. We also are continuing the World Languages Curriculum Development placeholder, that's $0.2 million. And then the last adjustment is transfers out. Each year, we make a transfer to the construction fund for equipment based on the projects that are approved in the CIP. So when we look at the adjustments to those projects, based on the CIP, there's an increased cost of $2.2 million for next year. So all of these items together result in a required expenditure increase of $11.2 million for FY 16. Slide 7 looks at FCPS's compensation and programmatic needs. For the fiscal forecast, we've included a market scale adjustment of 1% for all employees for $19.6 million, and we've also included a step increase for eligible employees, which totals $39.8 million. You'll notice that the cost of step for next year is slightly less than the step increase cost from this year, and that was because this current year, we also addressed the step problem we had at the beginning of the teacher scale. So that's why that cost is slightly lower. Based on the preferred option for Blueprint for Change, we have included a placeholder of $4.9 million to fund that as part of our fiscal forecast for FY 15. We have $2.2 million in bus replacement funding. If you look back, FCPS previously provided bus replacement funding to ensure that all of our buses could be replaced after no more than 15 years of service. If we look back, our bus replacement funding peaked in 2007, when we had $12.7 million in our budget. But through five years in a row of reductions, we reduced it all the way down to a low of $3.9 million. We did add $2.2 million in FY 15, which means we're currently at funding of about $6 million. So we do have a ways to go in terms of restoring that bus replacement funding, so we've included $2.2 million in our forecast. The next item, transportation radio system refresh. The Fairfax County Public Services System Technology Refresh is a county schools initiative to replace all of the radios that are currently jointly owned by the county and FCPS. Those radios are becoming obsolete, and we really do need to replace them in terms of reliability and enhancing the capacity. This amount is a lease payment of $1.2 million. The total cost is $7.4 million, spread out over seven years.
Correct me if I'm wrong, I didn't bring this document with me. But again, as we continue conversations with members of the Board of Supervisors, when we say it's a lease payment, we're actually paying the county for our part in that, but they've, they've actually advanced their, they haven't done that yet?
They're going to.
They're going to, right? Advance what takes to fund theirs?
Actually, I believe they're going to also have a lease payment portion, because this is just a very small portion of a much bigger public safety radio replacement. I think the whole cost is well into tens of millions of dollars. So our portion of it is $7.6 million. Some portion of it, they may be funding in advance, and we have a lease payment of the $7.6.
So as we move forward, ways that they could help us, you know, we are a small portion of that overall replacement, you know... portion of that overall replacement. I think it would behoove us to continue to talk with them about, you know, this is another example of where they could help us by covering those costs.
Then the last item on this compensation and programmatic needs slide is vehicle and equipment replacement funding. FCPS has aging computers, and we have, over the past years, reduced the funding that we've set aside for replacement equipment. So currently, we have 29% of school computers that are over five years of age, and we have a substantial liability looking out for both computers and vehicles. We have many vehicles that have also exceeded their lifespan. So this is $3 million towards, as a down payment towards those needs. So Slide eight provides us with a summary. So if we look at revenue, if we include the textbook reserve beginning balance, our overall revenue is forecasted to decrease by $32.2 million. And remember, that's primarily due to the decrease in state revenue, as well as our budget of beginning balance funding. When we look at our required expenditure increases, they're forecasted to increase by $11.2 million. So just those together shows us a combined deficit of $46.2 million. When we add the recommended employee compensation increases, while there's blueprint for change, school bus replacement, transportation and equipment, all of those that totaled $70.8 million, that brings our projected deficit up to $117 million for FY '16. So assuming the county's transfer guidance of 3%, that would provide us with increased funding from the county of $53 million, which would reduce the projected deficit to $63.9 million. So if we think of this another way, if we were to cover the entire deficit in the form of a transfer, we would need an increase of 6.6%, because each increase or each percentage in the county transfer for an increase is about $17.7 million. So all of those items occur before we look at our unfunded identified needs that are on Slide nine. So the first item is class size. As Dr. Garza noted, we increased class size by a half a student per teacher in 2009, another half a student per teacher in FY ' '10. And if you remember, in the school year that just started, we increased class size by a half of a student at elementary and middle, and by a full student per teacher at the high school level. So three times we've increased class size. Another board priority and another thing that's not funded in this current budget is expanding preschool through FSEP, Family and Early Childhood Education Program. We did add classes in both FY '14 and '15, but this forecast doesn't include adding any classes in FY '16. This forecast didn't address student technology and connectivity, so we didn't include providing either a device or a way for students to connect, which we know is a very vital thing. It doesn't address any of the issues or any of the plans that come up as part of our strategic plan. There may be costs associated with those recommendations. And we have a need to address our playgrounds to make sure they're ADA compliant. There's an outstanding fiscal need there. And it also isn't providing any additional funding at this point for either major maintenance, preventative maintenance, or helping us address that significant backlog in terms of replacement equipment.
Mr. Stork, did you have a clarifying question or comment?
I did on the staffing earlier on. You talked about the staffing. I know we've had a lot of discussions in the past about the, what, how much staffing turnover there was, and the formula that you used for that. Is this, is that similar to the formula that you used for this current year? And how does it compare? I know there's a difference in what the county does. And just, I wanted you to just take a minute and make sure we all are understanding that the same way.
Sure. So we're going back to the required expenditure slide, where we had included base savings. And one of the things that I noted was that base savings was in addition to our budgeted percentage for what we call lapse. And lapse is a combination of both turnover and vacancy. So turnover occurs when an experienced employee leaves a position, and we hire a person with lesser experience, and there's a savings between that higher, more experienced salary and the lower, newer salary. And then vacancy occurs when positions are vacant over time as we're hiring to fill those needs. So when we look at that for next year, we are using the same assumption in terms of that lapse budgeted component for next year, which is 2.1%. Now, if you'll remember, we made adjustments to our salary file, both in FY '14 and again for FY '15. So we'll continue to watch that as we move forward, but our projection is the same. And when you look at how we ended FY '14, our ending balance left from our compensation accounts is decreasing substantially.
So based on the FY 2014 we just finished, I think you alluded to it, but I wasn't clear where the end result was. Did it, was that higher or lower than your projections? And how much of a difference was there? Was the delta?
Sure. So when we budget for salary lapse, we budget for a rate of about 2.1%. If you look at how we ended our FY '14, our ending balance in all of our compensation accounts was just over $30 million. It was about 1.5% of our total salary budget. But you need to remember that about a quarter of that savings came from health. So when you look at our current year, we changed our health plans. We had one out to ripid, and we had new vendors, and we had a really substantial cost differential between our Aetna product and our Blue Cross product. And we had a substantial number, over 3,000 employees, shift health plans, which made a significant difference in our health costs, because when they went to the lower-cost plan, also our employer cost decreased, right? So that was a big portion of what was available in terms of those accounts at year end.
The other piece, at the end of 2014, we had a much higher vacancy rate, because we knew we were going to be eliminating positions in 2015. So when a position became vacant during the fiscal year, they did not get filled. And those are just one-time savings, because we won't have the positions again in '15 to generate the savings. So when you have a vacancy savings during the year, that could cause the lapse number to be different, but those are not recurring savings. Those are just savings you recognize when positions turn over during the fiscal year. And we do budget some vacancy savings during the year, but depending on how long it takes a position to be filled, your vacancy savings could be greater than what is budgeted.
Just, I want to make sure I understood. It was, the planned number was 2.1%. The final number for 2014, in terms of lapse percentage, what was that number?
We have to remember, some of it was one-time, but if you look at the overall variance...
I can put all that stuff in my brain and weigh it, but I just, I need a number that I can weigh. And if you don't have that, I'd love just to get it offline.
You said approximately 1.5%.
Correct, added to the 2.1.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, I have Ms. Strauss.
No? Okay, going back again to base savings, which we have in print, due to turnover. Years ago, we would, when we would
Yeah.
anticipate the cost of a normal step increase, back when we actually could give step increases every year. The base savings was often described as how the step increase would be funded. And so by pulling it out and acknowledging it here, we're using base savings just to balance the operating budget, rather than, rather than actually using it to offset. I mean, that's how, that's again, another indication of how inadequate the budget is. And we didn't begin to do this until the reset, until this last recession. Right, and that's, right. And so what we're having to do every time, if we're going to, if we're going to give a step increase or pay increases, we have to, we have to take it out of your general operating, because we're using the normal base savings. Okay, in turnover, when we are looking at that, the age of our employees, are we getting a little younger, a little older? Because that also impacts what we, I would presume younger.
I believe younger, and that may be one other factor on where folks are, of steps gonna adjust.
Right, exactly. And then your base savings, no?
Base savings will be slightly less.
Okay. Okay. All right, I have Ms. Schultz, followed by Mr. Velkoff.
Just going back to those mid-year, you know, the laps, et cetera. So each year, I just want a clarifying question. When we do those one-year contract releases close to the end of the year, are we account, is that what accounts for it, is that we're letting go the one-years, and then we're watching the budget and seeing where we rehire the one-year contract personnel?
We're not factoring the one-year contract personnel into that calculation
Okay.
when we do that. When the person is here, we actually calculate each of those people's salary individually, right? And when we look at positions that are vacant, we use a standard salary calculation for that vacant position. Now, that's one of those calculations that we adjusted in the FY '15 budget. But it's the same thing with the cost of step. We actually go through and look at every single employee and where they're at in terms of what the value of that step is, and then also when they receive it throughout the year, because employees receive their step on their anniversary date. So we do all of those calculations.
Because I always wonder, with those one-year contract releases and then renewals, when do they move into the regular salary base? Because, you know, we'll, we'll let, you know, 200 or 300 or 400 people go, if you will, on a one-year contract, and we have to do the notice, but
Correct.
but we don't really let them, well, we do some, we let them go, but some we don't. And when do they move? Why, when do we start calculating moving those into the regular salary calculations? Because I think, in terms of transparency, I think there's often concerns that we're double counting or something. So I'm trying to de-mythologize some of the ways we go about our staffing numbers.
So they would be in our salary base. So if we have a one-year-only teacher at a school, right, since we're going to calculate our salary base for the next year in May, they would still be in that salary calculation, right? Come the next school year, either that employee would still be in that position, right? Or if they still need an employee, based on how their staffing is calculated, we would hire another person. And then that change in that new person's salary, as compared to the person who was let go, that would be part of that turnover. But we're only counting people once, because overall, we're looking at how many FTEs are budgeted.
Right. So then we, then we move from the actual salary, where you're talking about how you start to actually calculate their salary, to that salary placeholder that we use, where we've gotten better at revising that somewhat downward to be more tight with the budget, correct?
For vacant positions, because we don't know what the salaries are going to be coming in. So we used to use a certain step, and as we experienced lower...
I understand. Just, when you move from a known body to a body holding position, when it's going to become somebody versus a person. Thank you.
So contract is not calculated into the factor at all? Just need to be clear on that. Whether or not they have a one-year contract or not, it's not factored into a budget.
Correct.
It's whether or not they're holding a position in a school. So that one person in a school, if I'm a first-grade teacher and I have a one-year contract, that is in the salary file as a person. We don't look at it whether or not that person has a continuing contract.
I'm just trying to differentiate between when it's a known dollar figure for a person and that mythological number out there that kind of expanded to fill the space that it was in, and that we got pinged on, you know, from outside, where if that one person leaves, then it goes, it reverts back to that placeholder figure, and we've gotten better and tighter about that number.
I think it's also important, this is a very good conversation, it's also important, many organizations do not even count their base savings. They don't factor in their budget their base savings. It just falls out at the end. I don't even know, does the county even have base savings that they, that they reflect in their budget on an annual basis?
Many other organizations, instead of capturing that base savings and using it to reduce the budget requirements for the next year
It's just the end of year-end.
or else they allow departments to have the flexibility to use that funding for other things, right? And we capture that and pick it up as a savings.
Okay, I want to move us along here. I have Mr. Velkoff, and then we have three more pages that basically look at the out-years, and trying to make up a little time here. I apologize.
Mrs. Reed, my question can wait till the presentation is finished.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Velkoff. Okay, so can we quickly, can we go through, since we are now doing multi-year budgeting, we do have some out-year forecasts.
So I'll quickly go through the remaining, the next four years, FY '17 to '20, first looking at revenue and then expenditures. So again, we assume the county transfer would be level in each of these years. It's also important to understand that for each year of the forecast, we're assuming the prior year was balanced. Right. So the deficit in each of these years that we show assumes the prior year was balanced. We projected in our forecast for the out-years that we will eliminate our beginning balance, our structural deficit. So when we look, we are projecting right now, using $27.8 million in one-time funding to balance the FY '16 budget, we're assuming that we'll be able to eliminate that and move to not budget a beginning balance, but instead using our year-end available funding to meet one-time needs, much like the county, including the Infrastructure Finance in Committee recommendations. We're assuming for state revenue, that sales tax will increase by 3% each year. When we look at state aid, it's important to remember that in FY '17 and FY '19, the LCI will be recalculated for each of those years. And then lastly, we're projecting federal revenue to be level each year. On the expenditure slide, which is Slide 11, we're including a 1% market scale adjustment in each of those years, as well as a step increase. We've continued assuming enrollment growth between 2,400 and 2,900 students each year. We have significant rate increases projected for the Virginia Retirement System. So we have a rate increase projected for FY '17. That's when, per the current state requirements, we'll move to funding 90% of the actuarial valuation. And then in FY '19, we'll be moving to funding 100%. So that's a substantial rate increase in each of those years. We're assuming that we're going to have continued cost increases for health and other benefits, that we'll continue in terms of our logistics expenditures with replacing buses. So we'll keep adding funding of $2 million each year, until we're fully funding our bus replacements. And then lastly, our forecast for all of the out-years assumes that we'll continue adjusting our equipment transfer based on the CIP. So when you look at that going out for each year, we're projecting a deficit of $135 million for FY '17, which would require a $7.2 million transfer increase. So remember, in FY '17, we have that elimination of one-time funding in the revenue side. And on the expenditure side, that's when we have a significant rate increase in terms of VRS, as well as a market scale adjustment in step for employees. Looking at FY '18, which is the second year in the state biennium, we're forecasting a deficit of $58.5 million, which would require a transfer increase of 2.9%. FY '19, that next year, where we have a big VRS shift again, you'll see we're projecting a deficit of $87.3 million, which would require a 4.2% transfer increase. And then lastly, in FY 2020, we're projecting a deficit of $83.6, which would require a 3.9% increase in the transfer. So when you look at those out-years, after we deal with the beginning balance in FY '17, right, you see some slight revenue increases in the next years. But then you can really see the significant impact of employee compensation increases and enrollment increases, and then those VRS rates. So when you look at all of those years, you do see we will continue to need significant revenue in order to balance the budget.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Velkoff, followed by Mr. Moon.
Okay, I want to ask questions about two topics. One is the county's planned transfer, and I'm going to wait till Mr. Stork gets back, because this affects the Joint Budget Committee discussions. I wanted to look at the structural deficit. So is the structural deficit, if I quantify that, is that the $27 million carryover? Is that how I would know what the amount is?
So we used $48.5 million in one-time funding to balance the FY '15 budget. So if we don't set aside or have $48.5 million in funding the next year, right, that's our deficit, our use of one-time funding. So since we're projecting only having slightly less than $23 million, there's that gap going into FY '16 of the $20.7 million. The forecast assumes that the next year, we won't have enough money to make up any of the beginning balance. So we will stop our use of one-time funding for ongoing expenses, thus eliminating the structural deficit caused by using one-time money for recurring expenditures.
But the structural deficit going into 2016 is $48.5 million, but we are going to have $27.8 million of that available. So in going into 2017, your structural deficit is $27.8 million, where you see in that first column under 2017, a reduction of $27.8 million. column under 2017, a reduction of $27.8 million. So when you balance your 2016 budget, is our structural deficit $27.8 million?
Yes, I think so. So where I'm going with this is suppose we were to say that we want to close that over, let's say, two years. So does that say that if we could have an increase in revenue from somewhere, and likely the county, that if we did that at, say, $13 or $14 million this year, and the same amount the next year, that in two years, we could close that gap? Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. So what I'm saying is, I'm just trying to put all this together. So the county is proposing what they, a 3% increase, which is 53.1. And if we were to take half of that, that would be in the range of between $65 and $70 million of additional revenue from the county. If I was just adding, if I was asking the county to help us close our structural deficit and can't do it in one year, if we did half of it in one year, it would be, am I right? 65 to 70 million?
It's half of the 48, you need 25 to do the first half.
If you wanted to ask the county to close our structural deficit, they know we have $27.8 million available. So it would be, actually, if they were going to help us close it in 2016, it would be 48.5 million. Okay? That's our structural deficit going into 2016. However, we've set aside $22 million a couple of months ago, and we believe we're going to have additional $5 million this fiscal year. Hence, we will have $27.8 million of the 48. So we're short that 20 million. So that helps close the structural deficit by 20 million when we balance the 2016 budget, whether or not it's through additional revenue or reductions in expenditures. And then going into 2016, because we're using $27.8 million in 2016, that's the structural deficit amount. It's whatever you use to balance your budget for that fiscal year, that one-time money.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
So what my takeaway is, in a nutshell, if the county were to increase it to more than 3%, but say up to 4%, we would make a down payment on the structural deficit. Mrs. Reed, if I may, I'd like to reserve my second question until Mr. Stork returns because it pertains to the Joint Budget Committee.
Okay, fine. Thank you, Mr. Velkov. Mr. Moon, followed by Ms. Strauss.
Page top on your projection, in order to balance our budget, providing employees with all the compensations, COLA and market-scale adjustment, we'll need, I lost my page, but 6.6% transfer from the county, is that the projection?
Yes. In addition to the 3% guidance, we're still short $63.9 million, which we're required about.
So that's about 60, or total 6.6% would be needed
Correct.
from the county. So if he, on top of that, if he want to eliminate our structural deficit, we have to go beyond 6.6% to provide the employee a compensation enhancement and also reduce, eliminate the structural deficit. Because what I heard from you saying that earlier, if he go beyond, if he can go beyond the 3%, we can make a down payment on eliminating structural deficit, that is basically saying that, that in order for us to do that, we cannot, we will not be able to provide a salary enhancement for our employees.
I think another way to say it, if you go back to Slide 4, to Mr. Moon's point, on Slide 4, it shows these revenue projections, or projections, our fiscal forecast, is built around a $27.8 million beginning balance. So we end short 60, I don't have it all right in front of me, 63.9. You'd have to add that on top of it to eliminate the structural imbalance. Isn't that what you're saying?
Because I just didn't want our, my colleague, I just didn't want my colleague to think that if we have above, something more than 3% from the county, we'll be able to make a down payment eliminating structural deficit, because we have other unmet needs.
So if we receive the $53 million as well as the $63.9 million, and then ask the county to eliminate the structural deficit, we will now have one-time funding available of $27.8 million.
Right.
Okay. Just want to make that clear. And the next question I have is, I am trying to understand that $9.1 million for FY 2018 is a positive figure for one-time beginning balance. Where is that from? I'm sure this is all projection, but I understand about $27.8 million that we need to eliminate structural deficit for FY 2017. But where is the $9.1 from in the next column?
That assumes it's addressed, and that's positive revenue. Is that correct?
I need to check. My first thought is that it would be the textbook, one-time funding in textbooks, but that's on the next line. So let me check, and I'll get back to you on that.
Okay, thank you. That's fair.
Okay, back to Mr. Velkov.
Thank you, Mrs. Reed. I just wanted to offer some thoughts for the Joint Budget Committee. So we know that the county is now coming up with an estimate of their transfer. They come up with that in April, and they're making up that number. And I'm hoping that one of the things that happens this fall is that we are actively involving them in understanding our needs, so that that number is really, I can't use the word negotiated, but understood here in the fall. And a key thing, obviously, to make sure that we communicate to them is that VRS, because that's, you know, that needs to be in their thinking right now. So that's the only point I wanted to emphasize. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Strauss. I guess I'm looking at, all right, I'm looking at this page. Potentially, the next step of sequestration would come when? If the federal budget problems continue? And the next automatic sequestration? Yeah, no, really, when is it? So the date of the next, basically, reduction in the federal budget with the mandatory cuts across everything?
I believe the federal government needs to adopt a budget. It's either the end of September or October. It's coming up like within a month.
So there could potentially be another, another cut of the sequestration? So the expectation is if they adopt a budget, other than a continuing resolution, they would then take another chunk out of the base? Is that it?
Correct.
We don't know.
I'm not sure if there is, we don't know. I think that's a fair statement, but I'm not sure there is a reduction plan, other than they wouldn't have spending authority.
Right.
Right? Until they adopted the budget or did a continuing resolution.
A continuing resolution, okay.
So there could be impact to the local economy if we went through another sequestration.
Right, that's the issue. Yes.
And for FCPS, that's probably the more significant impact from the federal government is what it does to the local economy, and particularly the county, because most of our federal revenue is for IDEA, and then in the grants from Title I.
Right. Okay. And again, in the state's projected shortfall that impacts, does that also impact FY '17, the state's projected shortfall?
When we did the projections for the fiscal forecast, we assumed that the reductions that we made in our FY '16 projection were recurring.
Okay.
But again, depending on if the state does any type of policy shifts, where they make one-time adjustments instead of recurring, that could have a negative impact to FCPS and FY '17.
Right. Because I know there have been statements by the governor and various others, they're going to try to not have this impact education, but we don't know. Okay. All right. Ms. Erinette Kofax, followed by Ms. McGlocklin, and then we really need to wrap up because we're eating into the next session, although we did start 20 minutes late.
We did, we did. You're doing a fine job. Thank you so much. Of course, very important. I just want to have an overall comment. Mr. Velkov spurred me, my thoughts this way. I think, as he said, I want to reiterate, it's very important that now we've had this presentation, that we take time to digest it and then go out and talk about it. We have so many joint ventures now. We have the Joint Budget Committee. We also have this opportunity to converse with each other. Go to staff. Now is the time to do that, to go to staff, ask your questions, go to Dr. Garza, go to Kristin, go to Susan. This is the time to engage. I think lots of times, we, as a board, have waited, and then something's presented to us, and we're feeling we didn't have the time to engage. So now's the time to engage. I just want to make sure we do that. And just so you know, I believe Mr. Moon did this regularly as well, but Supervisor Bulova and I are meeting also every other month, at the minimum quarterly. I have to check my schedule, but all the meetings are scheduled, and I think we're meeting every other month. So there'll be that engagement, and I encourage you all to do that with your supervisors as this information goes out there, so there's no surprises. And we talk about more robust conversation on the budget. I think that's, it's the time, right now.
Okay. Ms. McGlocklin?
So one of the things that I'm really hopeful with our Joint Budget Committee, when they begin to talk, is it's about having a level playing field. And when Ms. Quinn and Ms. Michael, you guys are talking about the structural deficit. And I think one of the things that's really important for us as a board to be very clear on is, when you look at how we are structured as a county, you've got your board supervisors, who are the funding authority for everyone. But then you technically have two boards. You've got the school board that funds, obviously, our entire school system, or, you know, decides the funding. And then you've got the board supervisors, who then allocate the funding for all of the county services, public safety, human services, you name it. So how does the board supervisors, on an annual basis, address and/or handle its structural deficit? And the reason for my question is because you need to have that equity and fairness. So if the board supervisors continue to fund all of our other county services and absorb and address structural deficits on an annual basis, but its very public school system that it funds does not have that same, you know, funding support, then we're really not getting the, we're not getting that equitable funding that all the other county services can count on and continue to provide this excellence in service. So I really think that's almost the starting point there. I hope I've, you know, teed that up properly in my request, but could you speak to that? Because I think that's got to be a critical starting point for the conversation, if my understanding is they do one thing for that for all other services, but we have not been having that same.
So the county was able to eliminate their structural deficit by having recurring revenue. So with recurring revenue, they were able to balance their budget without using one-time funding left from year-end to balance their next year's budget. So instead, they've been using their funding at year-end to address one-time needs that have been very critical. So at the Joint Budget Development Committee meeting this week, when the school system and the county each presents their current budget, one of the things that the county will review is that overall increase in revenue, how is it allocated each year? So we should be able to see exactly how that revenue has been allocated between county and schools from 2008 through 2015.
So as of now, if we were to look at, let's just go from the recessionary timeframe of 2008, over the last six years or so, from your, you know, your understanding of the county side of the budget, and again, going to the increases that, whatever increases they could give to their employees, or the other increases in costs for them, whether it's healthcare or otherwise, they find themselves with structural deficit each year, just like we do, correct?
They don't, because they actually have stopped using one-time funding to balance their next year's budget. So they were able to meet that need with recurring revenue, so they're not facing that structural deficit each year. I think when you look at how that revenue allocation has been divided between county and schools, what you'll see is it's not always even, sometimes FCPS has gotten more, and sometimes FCPS has gotten less. But I think the real critical question is, you know, why 52%? You know, if we were to look at how much funding the county gives the schools, right, we tend to compare back to, you know, we were 52% of their budget last year, so it's a good thing that we're still 52% of the budget. But that's the real question. Is that amount the right amount? What is it based on?
Let me just add one more clarifying point. In the county's budget, when you talk about the other agencies, they are given budgets, just like within the school system, schools are given budgets, departments are given budgets, based on the entire school system's revenue intake. So on the county side, same methodology. So those agencies get their budgets, and they spend within their budget. But as a county as a whole, they could have an ending balance, because let's say the police didn't spend all of their budget, health services did not. That ending balance is what typically, our ending balance, we use as one-time funding to balance next year's budgets. The county does not need to use that one-time funding. They did a few years back, during the very difficult fiscal climate that both organizations were in, they had to use some of that year-end balance. The following, I think it was 2014, the revenues came in with the tax increase and the assessments increase, and revenues were projected to be higher than what was needed for the following year's budget. So they used a portion of that revenue increase and eliminated that structural deficit.
That's what I remember, the conversation of saying, we're carrying a structural deficit, they are not, they eliminated theirs. What you're saying is, it wasn't an annual act, it was just over time, that's what had developed, and they wiped it clean within one year's time. So is it your contention that if they were willing to wipe ours clean, then we would find ourselves without it going forward?
Yes, we would love to have the additional $48.5 million, so the one-time funding that we have set aside for 2016 can be used to address some of our one-time needs. But right now, we're using it to address our recurring expenses for the future years, because we needed $48.5 million when we balanced the 2015 budget. So if nothing changed going into 2016, we need $48.5 million worth of one-time funding to balance the '16 budget.
Okay, I'm going to now suggest that we wrap this up. And one comment that I'll make, just after listening to everyone, is it would be helpful to have some talking points that we could all use. This is a lot of very good information, but there's a lot of details here. And it would be my suggestion that we work to develop, you know, a couple of bullets that we can all use, explaining the structural deficit, what is it, you know, et cetera, and how it looks in the out-years. So that would be my one suggestion. But in terms of next steps, I wanted to see if I have captured these, if these are truly things that we need to put up there as a next step. Mr. Stork, you were asking about the sales tax revenues, the state and county. How would you articulate the request for information?
I think I got sufficient information for, I just wanted to get a rough approximation of what the differential was between the two different formulas that are potentially available, and I got close enough.
Okay. And then the other question was about the actual lapse that you had asked about, Mr. Stork. Is that also something that you would like a follow-up response on, or no?
I can wait for the budget process, which we'll be going through in a couple of months.
Very good. Okay. Thank you all very much. This work session is adjourned.
We'll take a five-minute break.